Good afternoon, everyone. It's so great to see you. I know some of you haven't seen each other for a while, so welcome and please take time afterwards to greet each other. We'll begin with our town hall. So it is a pleasure for me to introduce Dr. Sarata. He has been doing some incredible work at the state level, very busy doing that, making sure that community colleges are funded well going forward. And so it's a lot of work, so please take time to thank him when you can, and we do appreciate what he does for us. And I will turn this over to Dr. Sarata.
Well, good afternoon. It's so good to be with each of you all this afternoon. So first, you're much further back than I remember doing town halls in the past. I don't know if that's an opportunity for me to react and duck in case anything comes flying from the audience. But it's certainly a pleasure to share where we are, to provide some context of what we're working on at the college level, what we're working on statewide, and what we anticipate. Obviously, it's a legislative session, so I will cover that as well this afternoon. I'm going to go through a number of slides, and then I'm going to go through the legislative piece, and then I'm going to open it up for questions. Really, that's the most important is to be able to have an opportunity to respond to questions. There's some that I will not be able to have a definitive answer, and so bear with me. We're all waiting for legislation. Some really good legislation, some concerning legislation. I'll share with you all from my perspective. And then you'll have to bear with me. I'm having coffee as well. This is my fourth one. And so fortunately, you're not at the sixth one because by that time I'll have virtually no voice left. And so again, I'm going to jump right in. We're really going to start with... Before I do that, let me thank you for taking time this afternoon to spend with me. I want to thank Pam for all the work that she did on the slides. I'll share with you all that, yeah, she did a great job. Thank you. Absolutely. I'll share with you all that my last edits were coming in Sunday night at 11:30, and my first one was at 10:30 on Monday morning. So Pam's gotten used to me and knows that I get to them all eventually. I also want to thank Ms. Bell for all the great work that she's done. There are drinks. There are snacks. Please help yourself to those things. Really want to start with student success, and from the vantage point of what we're looking at with Student and Enrollment Services, Dr. Maya and his team, you know, really for us, our number one goal is to facilitate student success. And so really want to jump into that particular area first. So our students have done a great job. The calendar for the legislative session is handed out in January. The session started on the 10th of January. Hopefully, it will end on signee die, which is the 29th of May. And then Community College Day was a date was selected. Obviously, we would have preferred that it had been further into the session in February, but there's so many activities. So, you know, we have El Paso days. I went with our delegation as well as with members from the community. But there's all parts of the state days, and so they're hosting that. Our students were able to get in on the 26th of January, rather early in the session, but still they were there and they made their voices heard. They went and met with leadership, and so our SGA is ensuring that their voices are heard at all levels of government, in particular at the state level. So I was very pleased to see them there. They met with a lot of our delegation as well as leadership from throughout the state. You know, our goal is really to focus that and ensure that we provide the ability for all students to be successful at the institution. So I want to provide kudos to the Center for Students with Disabilities. They held their second student orientation on the 11th of January. Kudos. Yes, good. Absolutely. There was 24 students that attended. In February, CSD held the EPCC College Day, and the students were able to, and their parents were invited to learn more about the programs that we offer here at the college. And then New Student Orientation staff provided college tours. So I want to thank them for the good work that they continue to do. I want to thank Ms. Lopez and her team at Career and Transfer Services. In October, we had the UTEP Transfer Fair. Absolutely, if you all want to clap out, that'll be fine with me. Kudos to everyone. Absolutely. We had about 220 students that attended that transfer fair in October. We held a virtual transfer fair with NMSU in November. And then in February of this year, we held another spring transfer fair with UTEP with about 209 students. In addition, the Criminal Justice Career Expo was held with about 143 students. So you see nearly 700 students of providing this assistance to them, and so thrilled with the good work that they continue to do. Ms. Lopez's other hat is Financial Aid and Veteran Affairs. Our FAFSA completions are up 3%. That's really, really good news. We want to make sure that our students, that they fill out those FAFSA's that they receive and all of the aid that they're entitled to, to be able to facilitate their success at the college. In addition, our default cohort rate is down 3%. So this is exactly what we want. We want FAFSA's to continue to rise. We want our default rate to continue to fall. So kudos again to Ms. Lopez and her team. In addition, we received an additional nearly $600,000 in GEAR funds. This is the Governor's Emergency Educational Relief. This is part of the federal government's resources that were pandered down to the states. We received an additional nearly $600,000 that we were able to help an additional 356 students from this grant. So I want to thank them for the good work that they continue to do. We want to make sure that our students start on the right foot. And I want to thank Alex Guerrero and his team for the great work that they're doing with New Student Orientations. Orientation is a retention tool. It is usually the first retention tool that our students go through. And so we want to make sure that we provide that. They provide a traditional online transfer bilingual as well as a Center for Students with Disabilities orientation. They served well over 750 students, all five campuses as well as online. You see the summer schedule, the collaborations that they continue to work with. I want to thank Dr. Escamia for that collaboration with that she had with the NSO and the High School Internship Program, as well as Early College High Schools and the Dual Credit Program Administration, Dean Badiyo and her team. Great job of ensuring again that our students start on the right foot and that we provide them every opportunity to be successful and to be retained so that they can get to the finish line. Mr. Talamontes and his staff continue to move forward. Want to thank them for hosting the EPCC Expo. This was hosted by Recruitment Services in September. We partnered with Region 19 High School Counselors and College Readiness Professionals. They were able to tour this campus and hear updates from our Student and Enrollment Services. They also partnered with the Dual Credit and Early College High School Program when they held their Counseling Institute. And so again, very, very thankful for the good work that these folks are working on. Dr. Maya and the entire Division of Student Enrollment Services, as well as our counselors, have continued with Operation College Bound. This was an initiative that we started before the pandemic. We did it virtually during the first couple of years of the pandemic, and then we turned around and we've started to bring this back face to face. And so it's a great program. It really avoids summer melt. We go to the high school. We provide the students with everything that they need from admissions through registration. So all of the tools that are necessary for them to enroll, we go and provide that to them. So our counselors, advisors, admissions and registration, student financial aid, new student orientation and testing. This is going on right now, and so want to thank them for the great work that they do with this particular program. We've seen the increase in our first time in college students. We believe that this has a significant impact on that. Our athletes continue to do a great job. Absolutely. And so I want to recognize our baseball and softball seasons that are going on right now this spring. Baseball and softball each had three players who were on the president's list. Those are 4.0 GPAs. In addition, baseball had 10 athletes that made the dean's list, and softball had five athletes that made the dean's list. Most important of all, they have 100% graduation expected for all their rostered second-year students. I want to give a lot of credit to our coaches and to A.D. and Ohosa, who ensure that our student athletes understand that they're students first. In addition, speaking of A.D. and Ohosa and his team, our staff and athletes continue to ensure that they're not only champions on the track and field, but champions quite frankly in the classroom. So we have our Women's Faith is our Women's National Champion in Cross Country and Half Marathon. She was also received All-American honors, and she was the Athlete of the Year for their respective conference. Adams-Bowat was received All-American designation as well. And then in the middle, you see all of the GPA status for these particular athletes. Again, A.D. and Ohosa, thank you and your team so much again for not only pushing your athletes to perform on the track and field, but to perform in the classroom as well. Kudos to you and your team. Let's talk a little bit about what Dr. Smith and our leadership team and instruction are leading. I want to start by thanking Dr. Mitchell and all of that team for this particular area, which is an engagement project. We know that if our students are engaged, they're going to be successful. If they connect with the institution, most importantly from my perspective, if they connect with a faculty member, their likelihood for success rises exponentially. And so I want to thank them for moving forward with this. This was formed in the height of the pandemic in the summer of 2020, and it's been implemented since the fall of 2020. All the way through this spring, they developed four areas of engagement, including the Tejano Virtual Events and Student Success Topics. As you see, over 4,300 students plus another nearly 1,700 YouTube viewers on the 223 Tejano Virtual Events. They also provided a survey, over 6,000 students responses. And so again, I want to thank them. The pandemic, according to the administration, is officially over. That was on the 10th of April. And it's important that we continue and that we continue to show that we've learned from that. What do I mean by that? So we've implemented a significant number of online opportunities for students. We shouldn't stop that. I expect and anticipate that we'll continue to see more and more students in a face-to-face manner, but there's always going to be a segment of our student enrollment that prefers online, or that may be the only time that they can attend. And so we need to make sure that we continue with those great initiatives that you all led. Initiatives that I was able to participate on online as well. Tutoring, I see Ms. Rodriguez, that was available from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Those are the kinds of initiatives that we want to make sure that we continue and that our students are able to prosper from those. Speaking of Ms. Rodriguez and her team, I want to thank them for creating family-friendly campuses. This is in cooperation, absolutely. This is in cooperations with the Aspen Ascend Post-Secondary Success for Parents Initiative. This started in the fall of '20, really focuses on strengthening supports for parents and boosting overall completion rates. In particular, all of our students, but as student parents, it's much more difficult when you have a little one that you're trying to contend with, you're trying to make sure that they're taken care of and that they have their needs and also go to school. So this is a great event. We're going to have a... It's coming soon at every single campus where we have the Student Resource Center and where we also have lactation rooms, our lactation pods. I've seen them on our campuses. This is fantastic for our student body. I want to touch a little bit more on this. So the Trans Mountain Campus already has that family-friendly space. I was able to tour it when I did the town hall at the Trans Mountain Campus. Again, it is supporting our student parents to boost that overall completion rate. We're ensuring that our students and their families feel comfortable. We offer educational creative projects, service learning and community engagement. And then we're also partnering with our food pantries. It's hard to learn when you're hungry. And so we want to make sure that our students have all of the needs that they need so that they can perform in the classroom. Our faculty cannot thank our faculty enough. Our faculty is committed to improving their craft and getting better in the classroom. We have the EPCC Faculty Teaching Credential. We have 34 faculty members that are moving forward with this ACUE program. It's a 25-week program. It's a professional development program, effective online teaching practices. We expect the pinning ceremony to take place on the 9th of June. And again, you see all of the framework from designing an effective course all the way through assessing to inform instruction and promote learning. So again, want to provide kudos to our faculty for continuing to get better and better at the great work that they do. I want to thank Professor Melissa Aguilera, as well as Professor Margie Nelson-Rodriguez, for launching and moving forward with the Faculty Advising Pilot Project. The purpose is to help increase retention and to serve students who have decided on their major. Our faculty are prepared to offer real-world career and transferring degree support, course information, as well as connections to relevant co-curricular activities. We have nine faculty that are moving forward with this, and then obviously, we're a data-informed institution. So we're collecting data. We're going to see where we need to tweak, if we need to tweak, and how we can expand this. So kudos to these two professors for moving that forward. Mrs. Yáñez and Caro Atel, as well as Norma Kuriel, want to thank them for the senior... Our Senior Adult Program held their 26th Annual Love Conference that was held on the 11th of February. We had 600 attendees with 38 community exhibitors, and it was really focused on a day of friendship. So we want to make sure that we're available and that we're friendly to the families with little ones as well as our senior population. So I want to provide kudos to Ms. Yáñez for the great work that they continue to do with that particular program. Dean Villalobos and his team at the Mission del Paso Campus, they're moving forward with a launch of an eight-week semester course offering. So you'd offer the first eight weeks, students could take two to three courses. The second eight weeks, take those additional two to three courses. At the end of the term, have anywhere from 12 to 15 hours completed. This was something that we had planned. Dr. Smith and I had looked at potentially having the Fort Bliss campus be started as an eight-week campus. Obviously, we've delayed Fort Bliss. We need a general obligation bonds and a longer discussion to talk about that. But Dr. Smith put out a call to his respective deans to see who would be interested. And over time, Dean Villalobos and his team felt that they could move forward with this. So this fall, they'll have about 80 to 85% of their courses offered in an eight-week session format. And again, we're going to measure and see what the success rates are. There's some courses that just don't... There's some courses that just don't lend themselves to eight weeks. Anatomy and Physiology is one that comes to mind as a 16-week term kind of course. But we're going to move forward and we're going to collect the data and see how well that they do. You know, our Medical Assisting Program has done a great job and they came forward in the fall with the flu campaign. I was one of the ones who never got the, the flu shot. I get it now and I will continue to get it now. I mean, I think I learned also from the pandemic, so I try to get all of my injections that I need. And so they came and they were able to provide me and some of the board members through that flu campaign, not only providing classroom instruction, but also service to our community. I want to thank the faculty, Emma Rivera, Alejandra Romero and Norma Ornelas for the great work and for providing well over 100 flu vaccines to our college community. Ms. Castanorn Williams has led this particular project. This is the Excellence in Hispanic Teacher Preparation. It's from, we're a sub-recipient of the Augustus F. Hawkins Center for Excellence in Hispanic Teacher Preparation. It's a grant in cooperation with our sister university. UTEP received one and a half million dollars. We receive, we're a sub-recipient of that grant. So I want to thank them for moving forward with this particular area. Again, in an effort to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our community and that pipeline of teachers. We've seen a significant loss of teachers in K through 12. We want to make sure that we're providing that. Our P-Tex is another form that we're moving forward with on this. Dr. Savin, I saw you earlier. I want to thank you and, and Ms. Nadia Karachev for the great work that you did with, with the Hack the Border event. It was a hackathon that started, that was held in November. We had students from the university, from the college, P-Tech students and even students in Juarez that participated, a three-day event. We had about 100 participants. Again, providing them that opportunity. Obviously, when we were in the pandemic and everything was online, students, not students, but individuals in our community as well as throughout the, the state, nation and world were participating in hacking, not necessarily for good reasons. So I'm glad that Dr. Savin is ensuring that our students understand how to do it and how to do it for the right reasons and how to be effective with that. So I want to thank them both for that great work. Our students, again, our students continue to ensure that their voice is heard at the state level as well as on the national level. Want to thank Dean Rodarte and, and Ms. Barbara Sanchez. They had Congresswoman Escobar come in right here into this particular facility and provide our students with a context of a day in the life of a congressperson. And really go through the kinds of things that she's working on. You see what she did. This was on, on Valentine's Day of this year. Certainly pleased that our students have the voice and that they're being heard by our, by our elected officials at all levels. And so thrilled that they were able to move forward with this. Our EPCC Social Sciences Lecture Series. I want to thank Dr. Wallace, who organized the series. And then you see the, the series, the different events that we held as part of the series. Dr. Burnham and Ms. Bell did Fireball in the Franklin's. Dr. Kumar did From Old School to New School, a history of, I'm, I'm pretty sure a history of hip-hop. I'm not sure if it's of the hip-hop. And then Dr. Tarek did Congressional Salaries and the Spirit of Anti-Federalism in the Early Republic. And later, next week, a week from today, we're going to have Dr. Kenneth Hammond, who's going to provide a lecture on remembering the Kent State shootings. This is a fantastic way to, again, engage our students, to hear about the, the history of our nation on different selective topics. And so want to thank all of our faculty for providing that. Certainly thrilled that we're able to do that. Ms. Caroline Wolf, who moved forward with the Spring Arts Festival. You know, this is the 46th Spring Arts Festival that we held. Want to thank them for that. It started in February, it will continue through the 25th of May. We have district-wide events from mariachi performances to literary readings to special topic discussions. Again, an opportunity to engage our community as well as to engage our students. You're going to hear a lot over the next few slides with regards to STEM. And so want to thank everyone who's involved with this. But the STEM Fuerte, or STEM Strong Program is moving forward. This again is a partnership between us and, and UTEP. And includes mentoring as well as health supports and summer skill building and that two to four-year articulation services. Want to thank our co-PIs, Clark Myers, Glenda Hill and Norma Culavir for the great job that they're doing. And then obviously, Dr. Jennifer Jamison, who's the project director. Want to thank them for moving quickly and moving in this direction. The Bridges to the Baccalaureate Grant. We've had this partnership with UTEP in place since 1993, a 30-year partnership. We just, we're in the middle of our, of our newest fifth-year grant cycle that was awarded in August and runs through July. You see the outcomes from, from '93 to '23. We've had 335 student participants. The last three years, 36 student participants. And it was a Bellwether Award finalist in Planning, Governance and Finance. So want to thank you all for the great work there. The Water Sustainability Grant. This is the pre-H2O or the Preparing Researchers, Extensionists and Educators for Water Sustainability. It's a USDA grant. It provides internships for 100 undergraduate students at both the college and university for, for over a five-year term. And our first intern started this spring. So want to thank you for the partnership, again, of moving this forward. Obviously, we're in the desert, water means a whole lot to us. So anything that we can learn about sustainability is going to help our community. Our Chemistry Department continues to do a great job. Dr. Veronica Gonzalez and her team of encouraging students to consider chemistry as an option for them, to look at this particular STEM field. They welcomed students here at the Via Vida campus, provided tours of our chemistry labs and conducted chemistry demonstrations, really hands-on, to be able to get students to experience what chemistry is all about and have that desire for them to consider chemistry in the STEM fields at an early age. In addition, our Engineering Department and our Discipline and our College Readiness participated in Engineering Career Day at Benito Martinez Elementary. Why is it important at the, at the elementary level? It gives students an opportunity. We know the literature indicates that students as early as second and third grade are deciding if they'll go to college. They're also deciding what they're going to study in college. Now, obviously, they'll change, but it provides them an opportunity to see what they can do with engineering. 100 kids participated in that engineering field of study and it was organized as an event to celebrate Engineering Week. So certainly thrilled with that. Ms. Stowe, want to, want to congratulate Ms. Stowe, Isadora Stowe, Assistant Professor on her solo exhibition at the El Paso Museum of Art. She did receive assistance from Assistant Professor Brack Morrow, who did the sound that emanated from each of her pieces. It's really important that we recognize this. Ms. Stowe's only one of four female artists who's had a solo exhibition in this particular space in the last 20 years. So quite an accomplishment, absolutely. Thank you. This is really important and meaningful to, to our faculty and to me as well. You know, National Nuclear Science Internship Program Professor Jose Rosales was selected to the prestigious Nuclear Science Internship in the summer of '22. He was invited back to conduct additional research this coming summer. And here's what's the most meaningful and here's what our faculty, and I know that you hear this, but I want to make sure that I highlight it as well. He's a product of the college itself. So this is a, a student who came through the college and was impacted by our faculty to go all the way through and is working on completing his PhD in chemistry and to be able to do this kind of research. This is the kind of impact that our faculty have and certainly thrilled to recognize that great work. Women in STEM Mini-Conference. Ms. Norc, Culavir, Engineering Professor, presented at a conference organized by Chapin High School. Again, we continue to move forward. We continue to see some areas of the institution. STEM has, for, for a significant period of time, been a male-heavy discipline. And so this is an opportunity for one of our professors to go forward and to be able to encourage young ladies that this is an opportunity for you as well. And so certainly thrilled that we were able to move that forward. Our Faculty Development Office is continuing to move forward. They had the Master Teacher Program, connecting faculty through sharing teaching practices. It has mediated the collaboration over 90 groups of faculty in the last five years. So certainly thrilled about that. And you can see the figure of all the connections from each of those respective disciplines. So it's just great work that continues to move forward. Student Engagement is incredibly important. You've heard me reference it over and over again. Again, if our students are engaged, their likelihood for success continues to rise. And so I want to thank everyone for the, for the work on the Student Engagement Workshops that were provided in partnership with the Technology Resource Center. Again, they were face-to-face, interactive workshops that are held throughout the semester. Faculty Professional Development has, over the last, from the fall through the spring, continues to grant mini-grants. They provided over $10,000 in mini-grants that funded anything from student success to pedagogical interventions, professional development, as well as community improvement. You see that those grant stories range from the Philosophy Department's promotional video to Let's Talk Mental Health with Ms. Iris Lopez. So thrilled that we're able to continue to move these forward. We have a lot of talent in our community. And so one of the, one of the mini-grants provided opportunity for us to bring in jazz saxophonist Gilbert Del Bosque. He provided a free performance at, here at the AST Flexatorium, as well as at the Trans Mountain Campus. And it was a mini-grant that helped fund this. And so thrilled that we were able to pull in talent from our community to provide that. Our Faculty Development Week was held January 9th through the 13th. It was Connecting, Discovering and Succeeding. These were both virtual and in-person. Again, we've shown that we've learned from the pandemic, that we have an opportunity to provide these in different venues when appropriate. 79 pages, 214 workshops, 94 of those were online, 114 were in-person and six were hybrid. So kudos to everyone who was involved with that. The Southwest Seminar for Great Teaching. This is our, we held our 32nd Southwest Seminar for Great Teaching. That was in Tucson. This was after a two-year hiatus. Obviously, we all know why the hiatus occurred. We had 80 faculty members that gathered for peer-to-peer learning. And since its inception, we've had over 3,300 faculty from 119 different colleges in 21 states who have participated. Our Faculty Retreat is moving forward. So it's going to take place in Durango, Colorado. These are faculty-led workshops, really an opportunity for our faculties to connect with their colleagues, to gain new perspectives and to recharge in, in the beautiful area of Durango. I've been to a whole lot of cities in Colorado, not been to Durango. It looks gorgeous. I hope that our faculty have a great time and enjoy that particular opportunity. Want to talk about Dr. Penley. Dr. Penley's not here, so we can all talk about Dr. Penley. I want to talk about Dr. Penley and her team and the great work that they've been leading. And so let's jump in. And this was really helpful to me. You know, the mission statement tells us the why. This is why we do things. The vision tells us the what. This is what we're doing it. And then the strategic plan provides the how we're doing it. And then the area plans, you go down to your departmental level, that's the what and the how. This makes it, this provides the context. Thank you, Ms. Bell. This provides the context for me of why we do. I mean, we inherently know, but we have to document that. And so I really, this was a, a slide that really made a whole lot of sense to me with regards to our strategic and area planning process. Speaking of the area plans, Ms. Fresca and her team continue to do a great job. The Board moved forward with the new strategic plan. We're in the middle of that strategic plan from '21 to '25. We have 63 plans that address Goal One, which is providing quality education to meet our students' diverse needs. We have 88 focused on student success, 75 on engagement and partnerships and 58 of those on sustainability. So let's talk a little bit about a couple of the KPIs, our Key Performance Indicators. Obviously, enrollment was impacted significantly by the pandemic. This is spring enrollment, starting with the spring of 2020. Remember, in January of 2020, none of us anticipated a pandemic. And so enrollment was moving forward as usual, had a healthy enrollment, 26-6. And then the, the pandemic hit in March of that year. And we felt it in particular, the first spring. We dropped to about 23-3. We felt it again in the spring of '22. We dropped slightly lower. But I'm, I'm very glad to say that we saw an increase in enrollment this spring. And we saw an increase in enrollment this past fall. So I'm hopeful that we'll start to continue to see that momentum, continue to build enrollment back, not for the sake of enrollment, but for ensuring that these students, that we facilitate their success through completion of a degree or certificate for them to be able to move forward and, and be productive members of our community. In addition, KPI 2 is, is our annual awards. And so these are from 1920 through '22, '23, the light blue bar. No one panic. We only have one, we only have December graduates in that blue bar right now. So we had about 14, about 1,400 graduates this past December. The first year of the pandemic in 21, 20, in 2021, pardon me, 21, 22, we didn't see an impact to completion. And that's a tribute to each and every one of you and the great work that you do. Then we saw a significant decline. We saw about a 14% decline in enrollment. So the second year of the pandemic, we saw a slight dip. My anticipation is that that will be, that'll be an anomaly and that we'll move forward with seeing an increased number of, of degrees and certificates that we award. Again, we're at about 1,400 with, about, yeah, about 1,400 with December graduates in. Dr. Penley and her team have led the Colleges Policy Transition to TASB. Those of you that keep an eye on the legislature, I'm hopeful that we're allowed to continue working with TASB. We'll see. But they have converted 173 policies that have been replaced with TASB policies. 53 board policies were deleted. They were no longer needed because of TASB. We have four policies that are pending action. It's a new look, same website, so you can go into that and find what you're looking for. But again, this is able to, to move us in a direction. I think all 50 community colleges are utilizing TASB currently. And it allows us to move forward with that process. The Compass Award, want to congratulate the Chemistry Discipline, who was this year's Compass Award. And it's for their use of data to improve learning and student retention in their program. Again, data-driven decisions based on awareness of local demographics, national data regarding the inclusion of women in those STEM fields. So kudos to the Chemistry Discipline for receiving the Compass Award. Our QEP is moving forward. Want to thank Dr. Quiros and, and the QEP team. Remember, the QEP is Find Your Way, Connect, Discover and Succeed. This is the new QEP. We've had 22 Career Day events that have been held with over 1,000 students. And the Implementation Task Force is moving forward. They'll look at the, the data from year one of our QEP in May and determine where we need to tweak, how we need to adjust and how we can move forward accordingly. I'm hopeful that this will be the last time that I'll mention SACs for a small period of time. So our accreditation process, first, kudos. We, we were, we had two recommendations, not core requirements, but two recommendations. We submitted all of our data and all of our documentation to SAC COC in March. We expect in June that we will receive full reaffirmation for the institution. And want to thank Dr. Penley and her entire division and all of the colleges as a whole. Each of you participated in the accreditation process. So want to thank you all for that. Let's talk a little bit about what our technology folks, Mr. Fernandez and his team have been leading at the institution. Multi-factor authentication is part of what we have to do. It adds more security to our account. It provides an extra verification step. So you'll be required to use that multi-factor authentication when you're logging in. Those of you that have issues, I've had issues. I've called Mr. Fernandez, he's helped me with that. So I'm certainly pleased. It is a secure authentication method to prove that you are who you say you are. Again, those hackers are real. And so we need to make sure that we're protecting our system to the greatest, to the greatest factor available. So one factor is something that the user knows, such as your username or password. And then we'll have to have an authenticator app for our security key. And we encourage the use of the Microsoft Authenticator app. So please continue to transition your respective devices in this manner and you'll see it. It'll pop up. You'll have to have those in place. In addition, Self-Service Banner 9 Deployment continues to move forward. I want to thank Abraham Hubal and every department. This is a modern, mobile-friendly, mobile-responsive and intuitive user experience. It is, it's now in place. We're abandoning the use of ID and PIN in favor of the single sign-on password. In addition, our IT staff has moved, has configured all of the modules for Student Services, for Financial Aid, Instruction and Workforce, Human Resources and Finance. for student services, for financial aid, instruction and workforce, human resources and finance. And again, the college's website, as well as the MYEPPCC portal, have been updated to provide students and staff with those user guides appropriately. Mr. Fernandez and his team have increased bandwidth rather dramatically. Want to thank them for the good work. Alfonso Barera, Mr. Fernandez and their team. The college's sonnet ring was replaced with a multi-point-to-point metro LAN. It quadrupled the inner campus bandwidth. In addition, they've doubled the interca, the internet bandwidth connectivity at each campus. And since the beginning of the pandemic to today, we've quadrupled the internet bandwidth. Obviously, this was, at one point, literally almost all of us, about 90-plus percent of us, were online. So they needed to increase that bandwidth to make sure that it could handle it. And they've continued to invest in those particular areas. I know you all, it's never as fast as I want it to be, but it keeps getting faster. So I want to thank Mr. Fernandez and his team for that good work. We've provided a new ID card system. IT developed this and integrated it with the new ID card system with, with that single sign-on. The student-employee IDs, they've been completely redesigned. They feature higher-quality photos, visible ID numbers and barcodes, and they provide students with more options when they're signing in. They've installed 13 of these production stations throughout the college with new computers, the software system, the ID card printers, cameras, backdrops. And they've trained our campus life staff on utilizing that new system. Those are samples of that new system. You see and recognize the building on the top one. It's the building that we're in. And they look great. So Vice President Shaughnessy and her team. Now let me start by thanking Vice President Shaughnessy for nearly 32 years of outstanding service to this institution. Absolutely, yeah. So Ms. Shaughnessy has, has decided that it is time for her to retire. I've talked her out of it a couple of times or had her extend that, and I certainly am appreciative of that. But she says she's serious this time. And so she's going to enjoy a well-deserved retirement. Cannot thank her enough for the great work that, that you have done. And let me talk a little bit about that great work. So the ACFER, formerly known as the CAFER, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, we received the, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year 2122. We recognized this at a board meeting, provided that to the board in January. This is 26 years in a row that our institution has received this. It is the highest form of recognition. It is in the spirit of full disclosure. And so I want to congratulate Vice President Shaughnessy, AVP Flores, and Comptroller Zuniga for the great work that they've led in that particular area. The external audit is incredibly important. And in January, the board was presented with the results of the external audit that was conducted by Benja Brionas McDaniel and company. Was an unmodified or clean opinion. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and there was no instance of non-compliance. This is exactly what we want, in particular with the number of federal resources that we have received. Outstanding job. The Budget and Financial Services, Ms. Davis and her team are moving forward with that, with that process for 2023, '24. They conducted budget workshops, and then we're moving forward with the new budget cycle, again, with the expected economic conditions that are affecting the college for this coming fiscal year. Also want to thank Payroll and Human Resources, Dr. Benja and his colleagues, for coordinating the efforts to pay that approved additional incentive payment that went out in December. So it was a lot of work. I know that it's nice to receive that check for our, our faculty and staff, both full and part-time and well-deserved. But want to thank them for the great work on ensuring that that was done appropriately. Yeah, absolutely. So Mr. Flores, Associate Vice President Flores has, has led our HERF task force. This is the Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds. The college received over $122 million. As of February, the end of February, we had expended about $107.5 million in area, in the areas of student aid, lost revenue, as well as institutional. We were, we've waived nearly $5.7 million that affected nearly 6,900 students. We were able to take care of their debt for them, allow them to return to college and to complete their respective programs. We have about $14.5 million yet left. That will all be expended by the 30th of June. We will make sure that we expend it appropriately, but it has to be expended or we have to send it back to the federal government, and we will not do that. But the, the remaining approximately $14.5 million will go towards lost revenue as well as eligible institutional expenses. Again, cannot thank Mr. Flores, Mr. Elliott, and the entire HERF task force who have gone through and ensured that we're expending these resources appropriately. Let me also say approximately 56, between 56 and 57 million dollars have gone directly in student aid. So this wasn't just institutional resources. A significant portion of this was for our students as well. So our human resource development has done a great job. Certainly want to thank Alex and the great job that he did. They held virtual workshops for 28 employees on Quip, El Paso, beautiful. The Emergency Management Series delivered to 165 employees nine face-to-face sessions, four hybrids for, five hybrid workshops for 53 employees. And then they're also doing virtual retirement information. I know that we all get to that point when we're looking at that. What I'd ask is that we don't all do it at the same time. So 227 employees went through virtual retirement information sessions. That's, that's a significant portion. And so again, I congratulate everyone who gets to that point in that career and certainly applaud it. Just would like it not all to happen at the same time. In addition, human resource development is celebrating 30 years of the annual staff development retreat. They leave in a couple of days. They will be headed to 30 years of magic, magical years beyond the stars, celebrating that in, in San Diego, California. So those of you that will participate, hope you have a great time, enjoy it. Dr. Linda Brown and the Leadership Academy Committee have done a great job. They held their retreat at the end of the Mountain Gods. They focused on customer service, leadership, creativity, and connecting with cabinet. Want to thank our cabinet members that were able to make it there, and I appreciate them holding that cutout of me. I had to be in Austin. In particular, AVB Primisic, who's allowing it to look like I'm holding that lightsaber. I, I would have certainly more appreciated to be with you all. Unfortunately, I had to be in Austin. But my understanding, it was a great event, along with the costume party, so kudos to them. Mr. Lobato and his team are wrapping up several projects, including wrapping up the master plan. Obviously, all of those facilities are up and running. We're utilizing those facilities. They're making sure that the punch list is completed on those respective areas. You know, during the pandemic, there was so much that was done to our campus because most of us weren't here. And they did a lot of work, but they've continued that work. So want to thank him and his team. Some of the projects, they added additional exterior lighting at the ASCA building. They, they, they did the camper, the cooling tower condenser pumps and boiler replacement here at the Via Verde campus. You see all the other projects that they've been working on. These are the significant projects. There are so many smaller projects that they lead as well. Associate Professor Aguilar, want to thank her for her leadership with a salute to the arts. The art exhibition began 22 years ago with about 400 entries. This past November, we had 1,340 entries. That was 100 more than we had in '21. And you see that students from kindergarten all the way through seniors and high school participate. We had EPISD, Socorro Isleta, Gadsden, Fabens, and Clint, as well as our homeschoolers and private school students that can participate. And the, the mediums included drawing, painting, photography, jewelry, and sculpture. In addition, they, she led the Literary Fiesta. We had 140 that participated in that particular area. The Community Spirit Award went to Creative Kids. And the Literary Legacy Award was, was, the winner was Lisa Luca, the author of Ashes to Ink, a memoir, and public radio host of Live True. Let's talk a little bit about Dr. Mo and the great work that her and her team are leading. This is Dr. Gross and our foundation. You know, the employee giving campaign, those who choose to participate, want to thank you for providing that. You know, our employees give to our students, to our community, to the workforce, and to the future of our, of our region. You see the testimonial from it's, Benja, of one of our students who received a scholarship. And so want to thank everyone who chooses to participate in this great event. In addition, the foundation will spearhead that EPCC Gives Employee Giving Annual Campaign. That's this month in April, as well as its Community College Month. So certainly thrilled and cannot thank Dr. Gross and Dr. Mo and their respective teams for that great work. Let's talk a little bit about you and the great things that you've worked on. So first, we're going to start with our annual awards recognition. This will be held on, on the 5th of May, Cinco de Mayo, at the El Paso Country Club. And, and we're going to celebrate our own great achievements from our respective faculty and staff. I know that's hard to read, so let me tell you who has received these. Our Mini Piper Stevens Award went to Dr. Eskamia. Yeah, absolutely. Congratulations to her. A faculty achievement award to Dr. Nader Asai. A faculty achievement award to Mr. Carlos Vargas. One faculty achievement award to Dr. Veronica Gonzalez. Several from this campus, as you can see, are adjunct faculty. Dr. Edgar Alvarez is from the Mission Campus, teaches biology. Mr. Irving Guayad is a music faculty member who's received that as well. And, and Mr. James C. is an adjunct faculty for chemistry and also a dual-credit faculty member. So certainly want to congratulate them. Also want to congratulate our two Presidential Excellence Award winners. Dean Badillo, I haven't seen Dean Badillo here. Dean Badillo oversees 18 early college high schools and 15 PTEx in addition to our dual-credit programs, does a tremendous job with this. Our dual-credit enrollment is larger than probably 15 to 20 colleges in the state of Texas. And so certainly thrilled with the great work that she's done. Ms. Lopez, in addition to overseeing student financial services in the Career Center, also oversaw the, the awarding of that 54, $55 million of student aid that we provided through the HERF resources. All I told Ms. Lopez is, I don't look good in orange. And so I want to make sure we do this appropriately. And she has ensured that we have issued those resources appropriately. And so again, these two ladies have done a tremendous job for the institution. And so certainly look forward to celebrating them next, on, on the 5th of May, rather. Also, our classified and professional staff recognition. Jesse Ariano is a grant specialist. She was our Classified Full-Time Employee of the Year. Alejandro Martinez, an academic tutor, was our Classified Staff Part-Time Employee of the Year. Elizabeth Rodriguez, a tech support specialist, is our Professional Staff Full-Time Employee of the Year. And Rosemary Chafino, Chafino is our Professional Staff Part-Time Employee of the Year. So thrilled that we're able to celebrate them. Absolutely, well-deserved. Our First Year Experience Program was a Bellwether Top 10 finalist. In the picture, you see Dr. Smith. You see Ms. Margie Nelson Rodriguez, Ms. Sandra Lujan, who is our, leads our Early Alert program, as well as Ms. Christina Sanchez, Secretary of the Board, who represented the Board of Trustees there. Again, this was in February in San Antonio. Dr. Mitchell, as well as Ms. Lujan, they lead the First Year Experience Program. Thrilled that it was named as a Top 10 finalist and, and really pleased with, with them representing us in San Antonio. Let's talk a little bit about the legislature. There's goods and there's, there's some concerns. So let's provide an update. So first, I'm going to start with, with the good. We're moving forward with redesigning the way that Texas community colleges are funded. I give the, the legislature full credit for implementing the recommendations from the Texas Community College Finance Commission, was chaired by Mr. Hunt, who was appointed by the governor to lead this particular area. And let's talk a little bit about our state first. You know, Texas, we're big, and we're very proud of being big, obviously. We have the ninth-largest economy in the world. We're the number-one U.S. exporter. We've been number-one for 20 years. $375 billion in exports in 2021. We have about 14.5 million people that are in our civilian labor force. And you see all of the data and all of the statistics that are there with regards to our state. A lot of positive, a lot of great things that are happening. We're home to 53 Fortune 500 companies in the state of Texas. Again, a lot of really good things, and we want to make sure that we maintain that economy. The Dallas Federal Reserve Bank produced this report. If you haven't read it, it's out there. You can find it online. "All Eyes on Texans: Community Colleges Focus on Preparing the Workforce of Tomorrow." So this is a quote from this particular report. More than 4 million jobs, many of the more than 4 million jobs the state expects to add in the next 15 years will require a bachelor's degree or more. But there's also a continued need for workers with some call, with what some call middle-skill, middle-tier workers. Middle-tier, middle-skill, I have issues with that whole nomenclature. I don't believe that we produce any middle-skilled nurses. I believe we produce high-skilled nurses. I believe we produce high-skilled history majors, et cetera. But this is what society as a whole has chosen the name. But we're going to have a significant portion that will need more than a high school diploma, but less than a baccalaureate degree. And that's what we do. We have 43, we represent 43% of all enrollment in the state of Texas. Pre-pandemic, we were at about 47%. We were the largest sector of higher education before the pandemic. The universities are slightly larger than us at this point, but we still account for 43%. 93% of all the career technical education degrees and certificates are produced by the 50 community colleges. So I think the TSTCs, Texas State Technical Colleges, and the Lamars, I think they do great work, but they produce 7% of those CTE programs, and that's all they produce. We produce, the 50 community colleges produce 93%. 94% of all dual-credit enrollments are enrolled at the community colleges. 69% of all baccalaureate degree earners have some community college work on their transcripts. 34% of them have at least 30 hours. In our community, 74% of UTEP graduates have EPCC credit on their transcript. So we are an important part of this state. Here's the enrollment. As you can see, in the, in the fall of '19, we had about 726,000 students. That has fallen. We, in the fall of '21, we were at about 639. We grew slightly in the fall of '22, up to about 640,000 students. But we've started to see a growth once again. We're, the state as a whole was at about 1.56 million students in the fall of '19. We're just short of 1.5 million. Again, Texas has grown dramatically. You know, we're over 30 million people now. Our higher education institutions should have more students enrolled. But that's where we are with enrollment. This new funding mechanism that I'm going to describe is really focused on outcomes. And so you had a lot of, all 50 community colleges are in full support, but you did have some people that had some concerns. I don't have concerns. We've been focused on outcomes. These are the community colleges and the number of degrees and certificates that we produced in 2001. You can see it was about 37,000 degrees and certificates. In 2011, it was about 77,000 degrees and certificates. And then you see where we are in 2021, at about 124,000 degrees and certificates. So we've been focused on this for quite some time. So a move from a participation to an outcomes-based model, from my perspective, bodes well for the community colleges. We're funded in three ways. All community colleges were funded through state appropriations, local property taxes, and tuition and fees. In 1984, 72% of our budget was state appropriations. Today, it's less than 21%. Here's where the 50 colleges combined are. So about 47% of our, our budgets are local taxes. About 30% are tuition and fees, and about 23% of our budgets are state appropriations. So this was an opportunity for us. Obviously, Texas has about $33 billion additional dollars. This was an opportunity for us to say, we want you to look at our institutions differently. And so we're going to be funded in an outcomes-based model. 94 to 95% of our funding will be an outcomes-based. So participation will no longer be a part of that. It's really going to be outcomes. So credentials of value, credentials in high-demand fields, successful transfer to the university, and dual credit with a purpose. That'll be the bulk of- and dual credit with a purpose. That'll be the bulk of the way that we're going to be funded. There'll be robust incentives for facilitating success of economically and educationally disadvantaged and adult learners. In addition, there'll be some foundational levels of funding for the small colleges. There's, so we have the tenth-largest tax base in the state of Texas. We're very fortunate to have the tax base that we do. But if you look at increasing a penny of taxes, not that we're going to do it, Michonese, but if we were looking at increasing our taxes by a penny, so you have fifty community colleges. So that ranges between eleven dollars per student, if the institution were to raise it taxes by a penny, to eleven hundred dollars per student. So the eleven hundred dollars is Dallas. If Dallas raised their taxes a penny, it would raise eleven hundred dollars per full-time student. I don't remember who was the eleven dollars per student, but that's the difference. And so in a way, to make all institutions be able to provide for their respective community, the state's going to provide foundational funds for a portion of the community colleges. Those that have less than five thousand FTEs, those that have a tax base that has less than a certain dollar amount. We will not be one of those institutions. So we're not going to be impacted by that. And then there's going to be hold-harmless funding for a two-year cycle. So there's only two institutions that are in a hold-harmless position. We've received some preliminary information from the Coordinating Board based on the previous biennium and last year's data of what we would be looking at. It's very large-scale. We don't have the details. We're waiting for those details to come forward to us. But the two institutions that are in a hold-harmless situation on state appropriations, so funding directly from the state, are Houston Community College and Wharton College. They still will receive additional resources. How? TEOG, which is going to be the next one I'm going to talk about. So TEOG is the Texas Educational Opportunity Grant. So the state has committed to upping this to, pre-pandemic, eighteen percent of TEOG-eligible students received aid. In this past fall, in the fall of twenty-two, twenty-eight percent received aid. Not because the state provided more money, because our enrollments have gone down. So this would increase the amount of aid available to students, up to seventy percent of those who qualify. So that's two-and-a-half times what it currently is. And so institutions will receive additional aid. So we're going to receive additional aid, and those institutions, including Houston and Wharton, will see their aid based on TEOG increase. In addition, we're looking at FAST, which is Financial Aid for Swift Transfer. That's the acronym that the Coordinating Board came up with, or the Commission came up with. So they're going to fund dual credit for economically disadvantaged students. So if a student is economically disadvantaged, the state will pay a certain level of funding for those respective courses. And then also, Recommendation 2.3 is for paid work-based learning opportunities. Investments in college capacity, these are seed grants. This is codifying the true grants. In the twenty-one session, we passed Texans Reskilling and Upskilling Through Education. It was about twenty-five million dollars of funding that went to provide grant and seed money for these high-demand fields. This would codify it and make it a part of our funding as a whole. In addition, Recommendation 3.2 is going to fund, facilitate shared services, and stronger inter-institutional partnerships. And then Recommendation 3.3 is going to fund non-credit credential programs that are convertible and stackable, that lead to living wage. So we do a significant amount of non-credit. We reported that, provided that to the state. All fifty colleges finally got their data in. And so we've seen some preliminary data on where we anticipate being. Again, only two colleges were in a hold-harmless situation. So where are we? All fifty colleges came out and supported the recommendations in November. In January, we're fortunate that a contingency rider was included, both in Senate Bill One, which is the Senate's version of the budget, and House Bill One, the House version of the budget. So there was a six-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar rider of additional funding that would go to community colleges should House Bill Eight, which is our funding proposal, be accepted and passed. In February, the governor came out with his proposed state budget and included this, the community college funding recommendations. House Bill Eight was filed in the House. Low bill number is important. It was a priority for the House. Senate Bill Twenty-five Thirty-nine, not as low, but still a companion bill in the Senate, moved forward. The committee substitute was heard in the House and Senate. I had the opportunity to testify in front of several different House and Senate committees, as well as Senate Finance and House Appropriations. And then last week, it was passed, a hundred and forty-five to one. You can go to the Tribune and read about the one nay vote. It was a hundred and forty-five to one. Thrilled with that particular vote. That was on the third reading. So it has moved from the House into the Senate. The Senate will, it has already been referred. We anticipate the Senate will take it up next week. And then the end of the session is May 29th. That is signee-dye. There's a period of time where the governor has an opportunity to veto bills. We do not anticipate that. As it moves to the Senate, we have twenty-three co-authors on the Senate side. So Senator Creighton, Chair Creighton is the lead author, and we have twenty-three co-authors. You need eighteen senators to pass a bill. We have twenty-four. So we're thrilled of where we are. We anticipate that that'll move forward. There's other bills, unfortunately. And I know, no, Dr. Burnham, there's other bills that are relevant, and we're monitoring these closely. So Senate Bill Sixteen is an intellectual inquiry in academic freedom. It's very nicely worded. And if you read the bill, there doesn't seem to be anything wrong with it. Unless you're a government instructor, unless you're a history instructor, unless you're teaching about the nation's history, and that bill says you can't make anyone feel uncomfortable. Well, that's difficult to deal with when you're teaching things that have gone and happened in our nation's history. Senate Bill Seventeen is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Bill. That is moving forward quickly. It has been passed in the Senate. Senate Bill Eighteen is the tenure bill. Senate Bill Twenty-three Thirty-five is accreditation. Texas is following Florida's lead. Florida has required all of their colleges and universities to switch accrediting bodies, five years. This bill indicates it's somewhere between fifteen and twenty years. Remember, I talked about retirement earlier? Fifteen to twenty years. That's about right for me. I don't want to switch creditors. And, but this has become a political issue that is moving forward. Those of you that are familiar with TPP, you can read their report on this. HB Thirty-Forty-Eight is Programs Within Service Areas. This is a TSTC bill. It would open it up where they would no longer have to go to the legislature for permission. They could essentially open a campus anywhere they choose to in the state. We do not think that's a good idea, in particular, when you already have a community college that taxpayers are helping fund. Companion bills, so HB Five Forty-eight is Community College IT Credential. This is good. I'm sure Mr. Fernandez is well aware of this one. HB Forty-seven Twenty-two and its companion Senate bill is a TEOG bill, which allows us to use Pell Grants to match TEOG. It's Senator Creighton, Chair Creighton, and Representative Howard have filed these bills. We think this is a good thing. Again, it allows us to use Pell Grants as a match. Universities do this with the Texas Grant Program. HB Forty-six Eighty-four is a clinical nursing site. We had for-profit hospitals that were, pardon me, for-profit institutions that were coming in and telling hospitals, we'll pay you for the clinical sites. That takes up clinical sites of the public colleges and universities. And so Representative Morrison from Victoria has filed this, and that's moving forward. And then HB Thirty-four Eighty-six and its companion are on the Texas Transfer Framework. We're monitoring all of these, good ones and bad ones. And what I'll share with you is that in normal days, the legislative bodies, the Senate is usually the cooling place. Our government faculty know this better than I do. But, you know, that's why senators have six-year terms at the federal level, four-year terms in the state level, where they have more time, where they can consider things and let things cool. The House is two-year terms, just like the U.S. Congress. Usually, that's the side of the legislature that is more raucous, if you will. Unfortunately, the last couple of sessions, it's been the Senate that has proposed, from my perspective, draconian legislation. And so what we're looking at is that it appears that the House is where many of these things will cool. I can share with you that on Senate Bill Seventeen, there's been some items that have been stripped, and it has been hopefully made better. But there's still some concerning aspects of each of these respective bills. We'll continue to monitor them. I'm sure that Mr. Ortega, Ms. Marine, our legal counsel, are tired of hearing from me, because I forward these things to them on a regular basis, and I have to be prepared. We have to be prepared. That if these bills pass, we will have a legislative expectation to have them implemented by September first. And so, good, bad, or indifferent, we have to move forward with that. And so I've continued to keep legal counsel informed. I've continued to brief the board. And I will share with you everything that I learned. And so we won't know until the 29th of May what is officially going to pass. We've seen some things come out of the Senate. We've seen some things come out of the House. They're crossing legislative bodies now. And then they'll have to have the conferees that will have to come together and determine what ends up being the law. I'd be remiss if I didn't remind you that our Fall Professional Development Day is on the 21st of September. You'll have professional development activities. I'll provide a state of the college. I will recap everything that the legislature has passed and how we're moving forward with dealing with those respective legislative mandates that come forward. I want to thank you for being here. Thank you for all the great work that you continue to do. Thank you for your attention, and I'm happy to respond to questions. And I'll go back to the one where I know where we're going to have questions. Let me go back to these. So happy to respond to questions. Thank you all so much.
Is the DEI?
I was this far away, in case you all threw anything. Now I'd have time to move.
Is it true, excuse me, is it true the DEI office is already dismantled, or is it in the process of it?
No, 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 no. I mean, I think that first, I mean, the first key piece is, we may need to change the name of the Office of Diversity Equity Inclusion. So I'm hearing words like student belonging, student wellness, student success. And so those, Dr. Burnham, everybody still has their job. We haven't done anything of that nature. And so I have colleagues, no, everybody still has their job, period.
Yeah, well, at a recent faculty senate meeting, somebody said the DEI office was kaput now. And I said, no, I think, I think they're making plans if they have to do it, but people still have their jobs.
Absolutely, Dr. Burnham. And the other thing is, is, look, we celebrate, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. We celebrate Black History Month, Indigenous History, you know, all of those things are part of what they lead. In addition, we have several different workshops. I don't anticipate, first and foremost, I don't believe that, by and large, the vast majority of initiatives that we have are in violation of the law, even as it's written now. And so that becomes a key piece. I think that there may be some key terms that are utilized that we'd have to look at changing, you know. So, again, student belonging, student wellness, student success. I think that those terms resonate. For whatever reason, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion became bad words, and they're being perceived as such. And, you know, those of you that read the Wall Street Journal article that came out, it was an op-ed in the Wall Street Journal that talked about a hiring committee at Texas Tech. Those, those things, from my perspective, were ill-timed. They weren't appropriate. But those were obvious issues. We don't do that. And so I don't see any issue. Again, though, I've kept legal counsel informed. Every, the DEI office is fine. Mrs. Chavez retired, so obviously, we haven't filled that position. And Michonese and her team will move forward when they see the time to move forward in filling that position. What we may need to do is, we may need to look at the name of offices and initiatives. Other questions? You can keep asking, Dr. Burnham. I know you may have another one, yeah.
Can you hear me?
This question is.
Okay, there we go. I have a question concerning the future of tenure. I know you all have to wait and see. But I have two faculty members that are, hopefully, will be on track in the future for tenure. So what is your office doing to maybe, I don't know, work around it?
So, so a couple of things. So those recommendations went forward. They were taken to the Board in January. The Board has approved those. My understanding is those take place in the fall. Those tenure recommendations take place in the fall of 2023. The fall term begins in August. My understanding of the bill, and my reading of the bill, is from that point, from September one forward. So my understanding is our folks are still fine, and that those will be moving forward. We continue to work with legal counsel on helping us prepare. And really, it's an anticipation, because we don't know what the final bill will read. Already, I'll share with you that the last piece I had was that, this one's on DEI, not on tenure, but that Senate Bill Seventeen, that it was voted out of Senate Subcommittee, and that there was a committee substitute, and it scaled back several of the provisions. That's good. Here's what I understand. I understand that Lieutenant Governor Patrick and the Senate want to push forward a tenure bill. It's my understanding that Speaker Phelan, on the House side, understands the potential damage that that would do to some of our institutions of higher ed that participate in the tenure process. And there are some concerns from the Speaker. And so, again, I'm hopeful that the House will be the cooling body of the legislature. Okay? I know that doesn't answer it all, but what's in process right now, from my perspective, continues to move forward, because the fall term will begin in August. That bill is from September first forward.
Yeah, I'm very nervous to ask this question. And I certainly want to make it not a criticism of anybody or the past, the pandemic time. But we're coming, we've come to an end of it, and the end is declared soon at the federal level as well. So, looking back on it, it has something to do with this intellectual inquiry and academic freedom subject. There were, there were qualified people excluded from a national debate. There were decisions that were made. And I don't want to criticize anyone here. I mean, we're implementing decisions, and there are benefits, certainly, from what we did as far as, you know, resources for people online. But I would like some kind of statement, and I don't know if this is possible, but as qualified people, to say that we can see where some of the double-dealing happened, and we'd like to make a statement about it, because these things come around periodically. Wars are an example. And those don't touch us directly, but this directly influenced how we were able to render our services. So I know it's a huge, complicated question that I don't expect any kind of concise answer for. But is there any discussion here or at the state level for some kind of after-action report? You know what? This is what happened, and we see places where we don't respect the analysis and the information that was delivered to us.
So I would imagine that at the state level, that, well, first, at the federal level, I would hope that that comes forward from the federal level. Obviously, I know that Congress is looking at this, and I would anticipate that there would be some, some after-event kind of report. I would imagine that the state level, that we'll continue to see that as well. All the way down to the institutional, we really are, you know, we're governed locally, and then we have a lot of state influence as well, and state resources. So I would wait to see what comes out of the federal government, as well as state government, and those after-event reports, so to speak. And then I'm happy to take a look at those, ask the Board for guidance on how they feel and what we need to do. I had colleagues at certain institutions that were back in the office in the summer of 2020. I have I have colleagues that didn't go back to the office until well after we came back. And so you you have, and it really depends on on the local dynamics of that respective community. So I would wait for the federal level to provide the the kind of report that they come forward with, as well as the state level. And then I'm very open to taking that on with the board's guidance. And I certainly appreciate it. I think you're right. Yeah. Dr. Burnham, you have something else? Please, I I don't mean to, I mean, I I want to make sure. Because I would Northwest had a lot of questions, just not that I want to make this competitive.
Am I ready? Ah, he's controlling it? Anyway, when VP Smith was here, I floated a question regarding the whole tenure thing, that if this thing should pass, if there was a possibility, we could fast-track our fourth-year people and get them in prior to September one. I know it's a radical thought.
Yeah, I I I don't have a good answer right now.
Well, I know.
But but I I certainly appreciate the thought. I mean, we're we're at about sixty percent done with with April. Our faculty, many of our faculty will leave at the at the middle of May to take a well-deserved break as we go into the summer. So I I will look to recommendations from from our faculty and our instructional leadership on that. I don't have a good response right now. I'd have to consider it all. And then, I mean, the key piece, and by the way, and I've shared this with with all of our folks, we're the only of the large ten community colleges in the state that still have a tenure system. I believe in tenure. I I I think it's good for the academy. I think it's good for for our faculty and for our students. But I would hate to rush something that would then have some faculty, and no one's harder on faculty than faculty. You all know this. But I'd hate to rush something that some some tenure faculty will say, well, that last class was fast-tracked, and do they really meet the muster, so to speak? Yeah. But I'm willing to consider it. Ms. Rodriguez, please.
Thank you, Dr. Sarata. For the last few years, we've been working on equity and closing equity gaps on certain groups. How does Senate Bill Seventeen affect that?
Yeah, it's a great question. It is a really, really good question, and I'll I'll share with you again. So we're very fortunate that we work at at an open admissions institution. We accept every student who applies to the institution. We have high expectations for their success, and we provide a significant amount of resources to help them be successful. So I had to prep as I was there getting ready to testify in front of Senate Finance. This whole thing had just come out, and we knew that this was moving quickly. And I had to prep to ensure that I was ready to respond to the possibility of a DEI question coming up. And here's what I'd say. We disaggregate our data regularly to look at the success rates of our respective students. And if, for whatever reason, we're not being successful in serving white males, then we're going to implement an initiative to facilitate the success of white males. If we're not being successful with African-American females, then we're going to implement initiatives that are going to be focused on ensuring the success of all students. I don't believe that we do anything from those particular kinds of initiatives that violate the spirit of what is in the DEI bill. But we'll have to look closely. We'll have to receive guidance from legal counsel. I know the universities are particularly concerned, and I know that there are there are senators and and House members that are asking for key data. I was just on a call with a colleague from one of the major systems in the state, from one of the major university systems, and they had received a request on the number of minority faculty member who had tenure at these respective institutions. And so that that becomes a real question, you know, whenever you're using. So DEI is going to be looked at for admissions policies. That doesn't impact us. We're fortunate there. It may be looked at on on initiatives, but the initiatives that we have are really focused on facilitating success. And so as we disaggregate the data, if we see again that we're not helping our students be successful in whatever group, whether it be, again, white males, African-American females, et cetera, we're going to implement initiatives to help those students be successful. I don't believe that that is in any way in violation of the proposed legislation, but I'll let legal counsel weigh in. I I I'm not an attorney. I wanted to be a long time ago, and I'm very thankful that I am not. Other questions? I want to thank you for the great work that you do. We're going to get passed whatever legislation is passed. Good legislation, really looking at transformational funding for community colleges. That six hundred and fifty million additional dollars is on top of the one point eight billion dollars that funds community colleges. So we'd be looking at about two and a half million, two and a half billion dollars. That's great legislation. There's some, there's some concerning legislation. We'll keep an eye. We'll ask legal counsel to provide guidance, and we'll work, and I will share with you all everything I know as quickly as I know it, so that we can work on this together. We have a great institution. Each of you has been focused on the right things for the right reasons. And ultimately, we continue to move forward and and provide the best education possibilities for our community. So thank you all so much. Have a great evening and a great semester. Thank you.